Second by Mark. Further discussion or questions?
So nine hundred twenty-seven, I heard a little bit about that's per person. So I'm hearing is there's
Per advisor.
There's suggestions of two, right?
Right.
So this is about a $2,000 venture with the expenditures of $250 for books and lists.
They do a fundraiser for that.
Any other ones?
And there's no time out of the district, there's no travel involved, so.
It's all for children.
Mm-hmm. And reading, and they said that, you know, they thought it was very beneficial for kids to read during the summer.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. Item eleven, Curriculum and Standards Committee report.
Great. Um, there's a lot of things that we discussed at our meeting on November 12th. Um, I'll just pick out some of the highlights. One of the social studies, there are two dual credit classes that we currently offer. Um, Intro to Sociology and Intro to Diversity Studies, which are really intense. Um, uh, dual credit courses that we collaborate with NTC on. And the, their, Social Studies Department asked that we move those from semester to year-long classes to allow students to create the, um, you know, quality work that is required and complete the rigor of all the assignments and projects and performance tasks that are required to stretch it out into a full year so that they are highly successful. Um, and that was recommended by the, the committee to, to do so, uh, based on their presentation to us. Uh, we took a look at our ESA plan again and just, you know, reminding, just updating whenever we meet about what the ESA plan is, what it requires of us, how our school improvement plans and our strategic plan in the district is, is really geared towards meeting the goals and expectations of the state and federal side of our ESA plan. Um, so we just keep kind of educating everyone on, on our path moving forward, how it is connected to our accountability as a district and really reducing the gaps that we see in some of our demographic groups. That's what it boils down to, as well as providing a well-rounded, um, education to all students. Special ed, demographic groups, homeless, children in poverty, student support, um, social, cultural, and mental health challenges, all of those students. So, uh, we'll just keep doing updates. And, um, the biggest celebration, which is really exciting for us as a district, so if you did not see any of the press releases and/or aren't your parents in the district with a child currently in the district and have gotten a uh, paper copy and a push-through Skyward release. Um, the, the school report cards were released on November 13th statewide. There is a, um, website where you can go and look up any schools' report card, um, from the DTI. And it is a calculation of our seventeen, eighteen student outcomes scores. So you look at our ACT statewide that all of the graders take, our forward testing, our access testing, and our DLM, which is called the Dynamic Learning Maps, and that's the alternative assessment for students who qualify through special education. Uh, we saw some really fantastic results. Our district overall score was a seventy-six point nine, which is in the exceeds expectations rating. Our elementary school had an increase from last year to eighty-two point four, which is, uh, point six away from significantly exceeds expectations, which is phenomenal. Our middle school again scored in the exceeds expectations range with a seventy-four. And our high school again made about a nine, ten-point, um, gain from last year to a seventy-five point seven, which is also in the exceeds expectation. So, it really is phenomenal. But, there's a lot that goes into, and we talked a little bit about it at Curriculum and Standards, we don't even have time, and we have more time we need to get into the, the formulas. But basically, the main gist of it is you are scored on your, not only your achievement scores, so you get points for kids who score in the proficient or advanced ranges. More points for kids in those ranges than you do for kids in the minimal or basic, whatever, um, rubric the test we're talking about uses. For the most part, minimal basic, proficient and advanced is a pretty good indicator. You also get points, oh, based on your growth scores. So you take cohorts of kids over time, track them from third, fourth, to fifth grade, and you, there's a formula they use that is weighted based on how many students in poverty you have uh, to, to figure out, should, are you making adequate growth based on the state's growth? So you are compared to the state in many of these formulas that they use. They also take a look at your gap scores. So, the hard part is when you make a really significant gain and your students are economically disadvantaged or they're special ed, um, or we don't have a high significant Yale population, English as a second language learners. We have about nine, ten students in our district, so they don't show up always on the public scores because that's redacted because you would be able to identify children. But that is another area where they take gap scores. So if the state's gap scores are, are decreasing, meaning that you're cutting the gaps between students who are non-economically disadvantaged and non-special education, and your district scores, your, your gaps are increasing, that dains you. So basically, you, you need to kind of follow, if the state's gaps go down, we need to go down. If the state's gaps go up a little bit and ours go up a little bit, we're, we're, we're okay, we're not great, but I mean, we're following the trend of the state. So basically, that's how those gap scores are determined. And then things at the high school, like, uh, all levels, um, your attendance rates have to be good. Are you getting kids to school, supporting kids and families who can't? Your graduation rates, your post-graduation rates. Um, so there's lots that goes into this, and it's factored in different ways based on how your district is weighted. Um, but it is, it is phenomenal to continue to stay in a category because once you obtain these great growth scores, you have to maintain those great growth scores over time. And sometimes that's tough. You get a group that just looks really different than the, the group you had the year before. And so that counts against you, you know, you know they're different kids. So, um, it's phenomenal for us to have, you know, our district and all three schools in the exceeds expectations. And I applaud our, our leadership, you know, our, our staff. Um, I think the, the school improvement planning, the, the ways that they're using the data retreat and analyzing the data to really drill down and make some specific targets with children. And we're addressing the whole child in this district, not just the academic gains, because truly, nothing happens if you have students who are in crisis and who are socially, emotionally not ready to be at school. Um, they are really making some phenomenal, fantastic gains, so you should be very proud, um, of the district right now. So, that's a great thing. So that's a huge celebration coming out of Curriculum and Standards, um, because that really is a great thing. Um, and, um, that really, it was the bulk of what we spoke about and celebrated at Curriculum and Standards. So nothing really needing, um, action, just kind of a report. And we can, do you want me to move on, Diane?
Yes, please.
Does anybody have any questions about that? There is a lot in those scores. Do you have any questions and you want to call me? You know, every year they change it, I think, I got it, I know exactly how they come up with this, twenty years of being a principal, and they've been using these state report cards for a long time, and then they change something, and then I'm confused. And then I have to read and call Al up at Tisa, and he says, "I'm confused too," and then they change it again. So, it's very technical, but it is, um, they do have a formula for everything. So.
How did you achieve that goal with such a poor-performing superintendent leading the district?
How did we achieve this goal?
Yeah.
Well, that's a loaded question, Corey.
Thank you.
But, yeah. We had some good leadership who prepared our, our leaders well in preparing for, um, setting high expectations and good goals. We did. Um, they wouldn't have been able to do that without some structures in place to do it. So.
And I can jump in, I've only been here six weeks, but then I get to see all the meetings and the agendas. And, uh, sometimes you can tell what a district is about when you look at the verbiage. And when you hear people talking about guaranteed viable curriculums, student learning objectives, professional development goals. Starts Julie to some degree in terms of working with our staff. If it's filtered down to our principals, it's filtered down in the classrooms. You're not just talking the talk. These things are happening in our building. Uh, we're talking about, I, I suspect here a few months ago you probably approved an ESA plan. Uh, the new school improvement plan that says we're going to close the achievement gap by fifty percent over the next five years in the state of Wisconsin. When you sit down and you take a look at what Nate, what Katie and Josh are doing, and you take a look at what they put together for their staff, that's not just something that was talked about in ESA, that's being talked about in how do we do this? The guaranteed viable curriculum, which needs a whole lot more discussion. But the answer is, um, this district is, is more than just talking, you know, we're actually making these things happen.
Yeah. And our teachers are working really hard, they really are. They're doing some phenomenal things that, you know, can't be celebrated. They're obviously the ones in the trenches, they have lots of good stuff on paper, but if it's not being carried out by the people in the trenches and our support staff, you know, they have their heroes in this too, because they're the ones who are making it happen every day. So. Great celebration for us going into a gratitude deep end of Thanksgiving, right? So, celebrate, because that's really exciting. And that concludes our Curriculum and Standards report. If there are any other questions? Do you want me to move on?
Yes.
Did I start?
Okay.
Yep. Um, I didn't know if you wanted me to just keep rolling. All right, we have one extended field trip, um, included in your packet, and that is, um, by Brittany Vaddick. This is a yearly trip, at least for sure last year when I was here. It's a reward trip for FFA.
Yep.
I'll second it. Against the world's toughest glorio, correct?
Yes.
WTR?
Yes, exactly. No, they come back the next March. It's not over the, late June or next March.
So we do have a motion and a second.
Yep.
Any questions for Julie? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry.
Great. And the last item we had was the approval, Todd Felch worked with administration at the high school. Last, uh, year, you remember, um, approving that we added personal finance, um, as a graduation requirement. It could be done through a semester course in Moesni or a year-long financial algebra course. So there's a choice for students, a semester. If they take the financial algebra course, they also get a math credit. So it kills two birds with one stone, but we do have that option for kiddos. And, uh, we found a great online program, Foundations in Personal Finance. Todd went through the details of, it is an online version. Um, it does meet and is fully aligned with Wisconsin State standards for personal finance. Um, it's being researched and taught in many, many districts. Um, it is a face-to-face contact with a teacher curriculum where it does take them through a semester-long, is intended for a one-semester course-long uh, lesson attainment, and it does require teacher contact time with the students. It's not simply independent study, I guess, to make that clear. Um, so the, the committee endorsed the, per, the Foundations in Personal Finance, uh, curriculum based on Mr. Felch's information. And we are asking that the board approve that, um, for the nineteen-twenty school year, as well as we would have one teacher using that and kind of piloting it second semester to, um, help us out with whether it, um, you just get to know the program and make sure it meets our needs.
I would so move.
Second. Okay. Motion by Mike and a second by Mark. Questions?
I think it's great. It really is. Getting better and better.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the Billy Committee meeting report. Steve, or actually Kelly?
Oh, it's Kelly, but it's going on to Steve. We met tonight at six thirty-one. And there was very little, which is good, on the building and grounds. He made, um, Steve, I'll let you hold the one item we had.
Yeah, um, well, what you see in, um, in your packet, we have some pictures of some platforms that were installed. Um, somewhere on the roof, somewhere on the ground, um, these are, you are in place, so you have access to the equipment. Uh, those are some of our final things we did this summer, um, because of course we kept the everything in place before we could get these, uh, actually measured up and put in place for the winter. So they're, they're, uh, it's set where they need to be set. Um, other things we did too, we also removed, our old electrical backup generator was removed. Um, that old wire disconnected, the new generator is in place. So those things had to get trained out and, and removed. And then we're going to seal that up here in the next couple of weeks. Um, and currently tomorrow we'll actually be starting on our cool air handle, uh, hot water coil loop. Um, the coils were put in place this summer, but we couldn't pipe because there's so many people up there. We just had to say, "You can't be in this portion right now." Uh, but right now, uh, we're going to start piping that next few weeks. So I hope by the end of December we'll have that in place and up and running. Basically, it's a heat reclaiming system for our pool. Um, so that hopefully will be done by December. And, uh, we're just kind of, you know, tackling the things we couldn't get to this summer that we could do now, you know, is going to be affected by it. So, that's where it kind of sits, and we're just, uh, flipping along.
Good.
Yeah, all right. Item thirteen, Personnel Committee meeting report. Jess?
Okay, we'll go ahead, um, with thirteen Alpha, which is the current job vacancy in the district, which is a four-hour housekeeping position, which is in the elementary school that we need to fill due to a recent resignation. On to thirteen, Rob, a discussion and possible decision of Teacher of the Year and Support Staff of the Year. I'm going to have Josh give a little bit more background on that one.
So we just want to make, um, a quick, a small change to how we present Teacher and Support Staff of the Year in the district. If you know, currently, we have nominations and voting by the staffs in each of the buildings in about the April-May timeframe. Um, so the, the person wins Teacher of the Year for this year, but then we don't recognize them at all until the following school year. In December, you're going to recognize our Teachers of the Year from last year. What that, what happens a lot of times is then, if we have teachers that leave the school district or take another job somewhere else or retire, now we're recognizing somebody who doesn't even work in our school district anymore, and they don't come back. So, what we're proposing is that, um, you allow us to recognize those people right away at the Excellence in Education banquet in May. So, we will have them voted on, we'll have them decided, so they will be recognized at the end of this year for being the Teacher of the Year for this year. So we'll still recognize last year's in December this year, but then in May, we will recognize this year's Teacher of the Year and Support Staff of the Year. Along with that, we have never, uh, recognized the Support Staff of the Year with a payroll deposit. Teacher of the Year gets a hundred and twenty-five dollars. Support staff has not gotten anything, um, in, in regards to a monetary reward for being a Support Staff of the Year. Actually, they never even got a plaque, they just got a certificate and, you know, something nice at the building. So, what we're proposing also is that we put Support Staff on par with our Teaching Staff and give them also a hundred and twenty-five dollar payroll deposit. And also, um, a choice of some type of Moesni apparel for the district. So that would go to both Teacher of the Year and Support Staff.
Personnel Committee unanimously approved of that, and I am seeking a motion, um, to make those changes.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion by Corey in a second by Matt. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I have Steve.
Okay.
One extension.
Thirteen Charlie, discussion of possible decision, approve the, uh, additional resignations, retirees, and hires, there were none. And item thirteen Delta, update on the new after-curricular hires, and there were none as well. We did have a future agenda item that we will be forwarding, um, under thirteen actual that will be, um, working to have the board, uh, or Personnel Committee involved with the future Compensation Committee meetings. And that is all I have.
Thank you. Item fourteen, Finance Committee meeting report.
So, um, the Finance Committee report for this evening. Um, item fourteen A, discussion of possible decision acceptance of the audit reported management letter. Uh, we met with our superintendent and with Brent and discussed our audit. We had a unanimous recommendation to approve. Uh, one issue that might be of interest to the board that occurred during the audit was they, uh, identified uh, an error in Eller's report, uh, in regarding the financing for our loans, which, um, indicated that a hundred thousand dollars more, um, was applied to interest and a hundred thousand dollars less applied to principal. That got squared away. Brent got irritated, contacted Eller's, and got us thirty-five hundred bucks as an apology from them uh, for putting him in that spot with the auditor. So, uh, otherwise, it's a seventy-one-page report, it's thrilling reading. If you want to get home tonight, you want to take a look at it. Otherwise, uh, we're, our recommendation is that we approve the audit report, and we're seeking a motion.
Motion to approve?
We have a, we have a motion by Jessica, second by Michael. Any comments or questions regarding this item? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, the second issue addressed was discussion of possible decision regarding land rental for, for ginseng. We have forty-one acres right behind us that is currently, I'm sorry, I don't remember the gentleman's name.
Uh, Joe Hiles.
Joe Hile leases from us for eighty dollars an acre to plant anything other than ginseng. Uh, he's willing to pay five hundred dollars an acre over a nine-year period of time. Uh, so when the land is in ginseng, he'll pay five hundred dollars an acre. When it's out of ginseng, he pays eighty dollars an acre. Over that nine years, we're expecting that revenue to be in excess of a hundred and two thousand dollars over those nine years. Given the anticipated reduction in some type of funding.
A decline in revenue exemption.
The revenue limit exemption, which is several hundred thousand dollars, um, we felt this was an appropriate time to, to allow that to be used for ginseng and collect that revenue for the school district. Um, so we had a unanimous recommendation in our committee meeting to, uh, have Brent enter into that agreement with that gentleman.
Okay.
All second.
We have a motion by Tom Chek, uh, second by Maple, and any further discussion?
Did you say nine or five years?
Nine years.
Nine years. Let me, let me correct that. So, the ginseng gets planted not every year. Like, he's not going to plant forty-one acres the first year. And it's with the sandy soil, I learned a little bit about ginseng, that's a five-year ginseng rotation, so three or four. Um, he's asking for, he asked for seven because of our current feedback that we gave him in a previous meeting with an extension of two, and we felt the appropriate thing was to negotiate for nine years right out of the bat and just be done with it so that he doesn't have to worry about digging ginseng.
You mean this nine years will be, um, the total of the?
Correct.
But we won't get paid the five hundred dollars on the nine years each year, or?
Right.
Every year that he's got ginseng planted on an acre, we get five hundred dollars for that acre.
Otherwise, it's eighty.
Correct. Corey, eighty, ginseng, five hundred. Okay. So we have a motion, uh, in a second. Any further discussion?
The total bills of a hundred twenty-eight.
Over?
You're going to have a hun, over a hun, hundred, two thousand, five hundred plus, whatever the eighties are.
Okay. Over nine years.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? One opposition, motion carries. So Brent, you'll take care of communicating that?
Yep.
Um, item fourteen C, discussion of possible decision, approval of additional energy efficiency projects. There were three projects identified and brought to us by Brent. Um, uh, two of them have to do with the Boulevard School, and one of them has to do with our baseball and football fields. Replacement of the furnace and air conditioning units in this building, and with all the little spare heaters around here. We think that's a good idea. We unanimously approved that. Also, the third item, which is to replace the single-pane windows in this building, um, we thought that was a good idea and approved that. However, um, item number two, which is to replace the burned-out bulbs and the light fixtures at an estimated cost of three hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars on our football and baseball field, um, we voted no. Uh, unanimously voted no at this time to address that issue. The reason behind our vote and our discussion was that, uh, at this time, with the amount of money we borrow, we'd like to get all our projects done and, and really take a new look at what other things that money can be used for. And at this time, we felt that, uh, replacing lights on our fields was not, uh, was not the right time for that. So potentially bringing that back, um, six to twelve months from now to look at.
That's good strategy. So, to table is really what you're saying?
Just number two.
Just number two.
Just number two, but with no intention of bringing it back next month. So, I, I think what would make sense is to take a motion on each of these three things individually, um, to approve, since it's not all the money asked, at least from our committee. So I'm seeking a motion from someone on the replacement of the school furnace and air conditioning units uh, in this building with, uh, an estimate, or a bid being provided for forty-one thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars from Albert. Let me back up one second, there's an estimated, um, uh, we're under budget, two million dollars in that energy efficiency project, which is where the money's coming from to pay for these additional projects. Uh, so this is forty-one thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars to fix the heating and air conditioning in this building, and we're seeking a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Kelly and a second by Kevin. Any further discussion on that topic?
How many, uh, quotes did they get?
Two. One from Albert and one from Wisconsin Mechanical. Wisconsin Mechanical, um, was a couple thousand dollars less.
So one of the four furnaces is broke? Is that the one that is broken?
Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, we'll stick to, well, we'll just go in the order here. Um, if somebody disagrees with our committee and wants to make a motion to expend the three hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars on lighting systems for the baseball and football field, now would be the time to make a motion.
I make a motion to table until, uh, spring of two thousand nineteen for further consideration.
There's a second. We have a motion on the floor by Kevin to table till spring. We have a second by Mark. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries to table. Um, issue number three, uh, which is to replace all the single-pane windows in the Boulevard School. Um, they're thirty-two years old and they weren't very good in the first place, is my understanding. Um, the budget cost for this project is twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars. That would also be paid out of the two million dollars surplus we're anticipating. Um, I entertain a motion to approve that.
Make a motion to approve?
I'll second that.
Uh, we have a motion by Jessica, second by Kelly. Any further discussion?
What are the windows of them? Steve?
I think it's thirty-one.
I think it's thirty-one.
Three words, we know us.
It's possible.
Would it both front?
It would be, is that from all the windows in this building?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
And when would they both be completed, Mike?
Well, I guess it, that depends on the contractor and availability of product, I guess.
Right.
A little laid at their feet, um, you know, if they want to come work on a Saturday and knock a bunch out, that's great. Well, I guess we'll talk and see how that shakes out. But, yeah.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We had a unanimously approved and recommend the approval of the much, monthly voucher list. I'll make the motion that we approve that.
I'll second it.
We have a motion in a second to approve the monthly voucher list. Any further discussion?
Oh, it's a roll call vote.
And no further discussion, we'll have a roll call vote.
Barnes?
Yes.
Bommen?
Yes.
Kiwis?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Kaiser?
Yes.
Maple?
Yes.
Teal?
Yes.
Tom Chek?
Yes.
Zebro?
Yes.
All yes.
Motion carries. Item number fourteen E, discussion, uh, possible decision approval of monthly voucher list. Uh, our committee unanimously approved that. I would make a motion that we approve of this treasurer's report.
I'll second it.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Is that a roll call vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And that'll be a roll call vote.
Kaiser?
Yes.
Maple?
Yes.
Teal? Tom Chek?
Yes.
Zebro?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Bommen?
Yes.
Kiwis?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
All yes.
Madam President, that concludes this month's Finance Committee report.
Thank you. Um, item fifteen, other reports.
That would be me, and we all received, I believe, an email from Amy for both, uh, school board convention down in Milwaukee. So please let Amy know. In your school news, there is the whole, pretty much, agenda for the three days and whatever you can make, so, look at it, read it, let Amy know. That's all I have.
They also have the app too, that you can have the agenda.
They're adding it, yes, they are. They'll do it.
Item fifteen B, CISA nine, report.
I have not much required other than the President's statement in the packet. I have not much to report, other than the printed hot statement in the packet.
Okay. Thank you. Item sixteen, future agenda items.
I was just wondering if there's a chance that we could move our starting time to six o'clock, that would be, somebody could talk it up, see if it, Mike works tonight, can't recognize, I'm in a meeting shortly.
Sure.
So I'm gonna use it and take the state for all ones and you can make it.
Sure, sure. Bring it back.
But if it's going to be a hardship to somebody else, give me that time.
Okay, anything else? All right, we're going to move on. Item seventeen, movement into closed executive session. The board will want to close executive session pursuant to sections nineteen point eight five, friend one, friend C, and friend E are the Wisconsin statutes for the purpose of considering performance evaluation data of public employees over which the school board exercises jurisdiction, purchasing public properties, and investigation. Section nineteen point eight five, friend one, friend C reads, considering instrument promotion, compensation... Or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises the flexibility. Section nineteen point eight five, friend one, friend E reads, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public property, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business, whatever, added up for market reasons, require a closed session. So I... Thank you. A second?
Sorry.
A second by Matt. Roll call, please. It was Mike and Matt.
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Bauman?
Yes.
Ewes?
I'm sorry, you left.
Gorman?
Yes.
Kaiser?
Yes.
Maple?
Yes.
Teal?
Yes.
Tomcheck?
Yes.
Zebro?